No, I'm starting.
Oh, shoot.
Okay, I think we're ready to. I didn't, I know, but. Of course. Told you.
I don't.
We can do it.
See?
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. And we're going to start out with public comment. So if you would like to speak for a public comment, each person has three minutes as their time alone and cannot be passed to someone else. If you have concerns or comments about individuals, those are not appropriate during public comment. Time, so please don't say anything that would identify circumstances or a person or a group of people directly by what you say. Be respectful. People on Zoom are welcome to join public comment, just put your name in the chat. So is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment? Is there anyone on the chat that would like to make a public comment? Is there anyone on there? Are we on? Online? Nope, Cory said no. Okay, all right. Then I think we're ready to get started. And before we move on, I first want to just give a welcome to the. And it's very, very nice to have you here. I think being here and. Great meet and greet last night, but it turned out very well and a lot of. Meeting members were here and so that was. It was really nice. All right, let's start with the school reports.
Um, so start middle school, high school, uh, just a lot of. You know, getting the work, the building cleaned up and getting rooms cleaned. We have one position posted right now that's going to end up being a one-year contract so that we can kind of figure out how we're going to move forward with that position in the future. It has been posted as of Monday, we have one applicant at this point in time, and that's for our, our fax health position. Um, so we'll, we'll keep looking for more to come in and then once, once we kind of have a feel, we'll be able to set up some interviews. Um, handbooks have been presented for tonight. We did a big change last year for the middle school, high school handbook, so really this year was a lot of technical changes, name changes. Um, and some grammar stuff that I saw as I was going through it again, so nothing major in there. Other thing is hand, uh, not handbooks, I already said handbooks, summer school. It's so fun. Um, I was a little nervous to start summer school, uh, just as a middle school, high school kind of like is my jam and that's what I've always done and then. Dealing with the little kids, I was a little alone nervous, um, but oh my gosh, they're adorable and they're so fun to work with and it's just a different energy. Um, and there's been so many great learning opportunities that have been happening that have given kids so many hands-on experiences with things that they might not normally get. So it's been really great, hopefully, um, I'll talk to Denise, but maybe next month we'll be able to put together a summer school spotlight since it'll be done by then. Um, and then you'll be able to see kind of a little bit more of what they're doing. We'll see if we need somebody to come in and also talk about how it works, so. But other than that, we're just getting ready for, starting to get ready for the next school year soon.
Uh, just like Andy mentioned, uh, the elementary building is happening, summer school, so I think it's like a hundred and seventy kids throughout the first few weeks and. Um, still more coming, so it's been pretty exciting. And then also we have the early learnings that are still open throughout the summer as well as pass card kids. Um, they've done some pretty fun things, Water Wednesday, field trip to Tesner's Dairy Time, and they're actually working in the garden, so they're already covering same, they're eating blueberries and raspberries. And I know there's a little more produce coming, so it's been a really great summer so far. Uh, elementary handbook, uh, there's a few just technical corrections, those are highlighted in green and then a few additions and edits in yellow. So one of them was related to, um, limiting student absences. And so we're already putting this in place, we wanted to be reflected in the handbook, just taking a little bit more proactive approach. Um, meeting with families, figure out what are the barriers, what's happening, how we'll work together as a team and do so on the early end as opposed to the later end. So that's just reflected in there. Um, a little bit of editing around the devices and so that policy has changed and so not, not very recently, but since the last update for the handbook. So just updated to reflect that. Um, but then there's also an additional part on, um, school devices. And so we have students sign an iPad agreement or Chromebook agreement with expectations, how to use those devices. Uh, we also want to reflect in our handbook and limit, um, damage that's happening to them and helps students really take responsibility and ownership over it. Uh, there's also kind of a sentence in there that reflects that intentional use of our school devices, really honing in on using that for individualized learning. Um, or those projects and then, um, other than that, it's really want to emphasize screen through learning. So it just more effectively reflects our priorities. And then if you notice, this part wasn't change, change, but, um, related to personal devices for students, our expectation is that students keep their devices in their locker or your pocket. Um, they have to ask permission from a teacher to use it and they may have to check the message from a family member and they can do that with permission. If they don't use it that way, then, uh, we, it is moved and brought to the principal's office. Uh, we do that pretty proactively, we let especially sixth graders, but now it's starting to impact fifth and fourth and perhaps maybe even early years we go, go on. But we let them know that ahead of time, we work with them, work with families and just talked with the sixth grade teachers and they're on board to continue that proactive approach. So it isn't a change, but, um, just wanted to highlight that since that's one part of the handbook, we really connect with kids on and they know word for word, so. Um, in addition to handbooks, uh, summer curriculum work, you'll see individual action item A is our adoption of the academic standards. As you know, we teach the Wisconsin State Standards, we have the emphasis on the local history and culture of Washington, just something that makes us very unique and very special. And, um, those standards don't change over time unless that they are formally adopted and updated through the state. Uh, but they do, um, the way that we organize them by unit and the activities that we use to teach those standards does change. And even the priorities, the emphasis on which standards, so a lot of that work happens in the summer and that's both part of curriculum work and part of our school improvement work. So, uh, I actually really like this time of year, I get to work with a lot of the high school teachers, uh, middle school teachers and of course elementary on some of those, uh, adjustments to the way the standards are taught. And then just my last, um, update is I'd like to just, uh, take a few minutes to honor another retirement. At our last meeting, I got to talk about a few of our retirees and I'd like to just say a few words about Chris Gaver. Um, this one is, I think it's always hard when you have a retirement, but it's especially hard, um, with Chris. And I think the reason behind that is truthful, uh, we're a very tight-knit community. Um, and if you think about it, we go through hard times together, we celebrate good times together, um, we are in it day in and day out. Um, and we celebrate life events too, marriages and babies and family members. And Chris is always the one behind those things. So she's the one playing in the shower, she's the one putting books in your backpack that she thinks your kids will like and just throwing the extra mile to really keep us a family and keep us together. Um, and so we really go through thick and thin together, but also she's a huge part of our instruction and has been for the last several decades. Uh, she's very famous for the historic Brownstone Walk that her second graders take and I'm happy to say that future will live on, even though she hasn't taught second grade for four years, we're still doing it. Um, icky sticky, wee gooey, uh, science chemistry experience, uh, is an awesome summer school class that she's taught for many years, it's sort of a rite of passage for kids. Um, it's, it had to move to the lunchroom because so many kids want to take it every year, we have multiple teachers helping with it because they're so invested in it. And a few years ago, Chris shared with me what goes into that class. Um, there's science, there's math, there's reading, she's doing, um, growth, human, um, what's her, uh, growth mindset, lifelong learning skills. It's amazing what she packs into this opportunity that kids get to, get their hands dirty and how much they're learning through it, so. Um, and then just the reading instruction that she's provided, so last three years she's been reading interventionist. Um, she's worked with many struggling readers and helped them develop the skills and strategies to be excellent readers. Uh, I had a meeting in the spring looking at an individual student score and it was off the charts. Like we had to go back and double check to make sure that it was accurate because they have made so much growth by working with Mrs. Gaver. Um, but she also teaches, uh, students how to believe in themselves, how to see themselves as readers. And as her position evolved and went on, she not only worked with struggling readers, but with, um, advanced readers and eventually all readers, she was with entire grades and entire classes, um, and teachers to help them with their instruction as well, so. Uh, she's an amazing educator, she's a definition of a lifelong learner and she will be great.
I just have to say my, my most memorable words with Chris is when we caught it most. One of the first second graders caught it with his bare hands.
Oh, no.
It was an interesting moment. It was an educational moment.
All right, well, well, I'm, thank you for the welcome and it's great to be here. I think I'm officially in day nine, minus the fourth of July would be eight, so it's been a fast and kind of, uh. Start before you start kind of, um, experience, but has the community ever been so welcoming? The staff, the school board, just have to say thank you so much for, uh, just the hospitality and the kindness and the meet and greet was just a really warm welcome. Uh, it, within my board report, I shared that, you know, my focus, I have a, a one hundred day plan that I've shared with the board and in the first hundred days is focused a lot on building relationships, building trust, transparency. And, um, really beginning to plan for the future. So I'm looking forward to, you know, using the summer months to do that and then roll into the start of the year and have some additional updates for the board, the staff and, um, community as, you know, that time moves forward. And it's been wonderful to meet individually with board members and get their thoughts and views. We have a board retreat coming up in the next couple of weeks where we'll dig into, um, even more of the board work and I'm looking forward to that. The district office has been amazing, it's been fun to get to know the staff in there. Of course, many of the other staff members, aside from our amazing administrative team who I met with today for a few hours and we dove into. I mean, almost every, I don't even know, we must have had twenty items that we were able to go through and start the, the process of learning and growing together. Um, it's just been great, so I'm really looking forward to seeing additional staff and students in the building to keep connecting. Even so, I still had visitors, so I've had people popping in and it's just been really, um, really great. The only other piece, um, in terms of updates, because I'm, you know, just getting started is, um, and I guess I'll wait for Sandy to mention the policy corrections, I think that's the next second, so.
For you to bring most of those up.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Um, let's just go right on to the, the policy. Concerns, there were a number of technical concerns, uh, corrections that Tom did make before he left. So that was nice and we'll be going to the title line.
Yeah, yeah, there isn't much to share aside from the corrections were, again, Tom was gracious and did that ahead of his departure and there's nothing in terms of. Changing any of those policies aside from some technical language corrections.
So anyways, those are all taken care of. Um, approval of financial reports and bills.
Uh, I reviewed the financial reports, um, on Tuesday, I think it was, and, uh, everything looks great and, uh, super organized, super grateful to Janet for, um, just having such a clean, uh, record of everything we're doing. So I moved to approve the financial statements.
Awesome. Any other discussion, questions? All favor?
All right.
I'm. Can you post? Carry. All right, um, consent agenda. Number, a lot of coaches. And again, Chris Gaver's retirement is also included on there and, um, thank you for the time, George, for the, and we continue with it. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Oh.
Make your bid. All second.
Um, favor? All right. Post? Oh, can I? Didn't put, I, Lisa's, Lisa's also missing, she was on the next page, so I missed that one. She gets to that one also, I hear. Which one, respond to any of that? That might not, but I did.
Yeah, we had, Ivy might have a little more background on, on that, but it sounds like we have a great plan in place for the upcoming school year for someone to, to stop in that arena, so. We're happy to support that leave.
All right. Sure. I, I just want to say that a couple of years ago, Grace asked for, um, an extension after we, and. Said. And I have heard from a couple of teachers who are happy. About this, that they just think that how long can you keep extending, you know? They feel. Sort of a, and. That's all it is, but also to, to be good in this position. You know that, you know, one of the things that really is not thought that, that this would, there would be no more extensions after this. Also that there's no guarantee that she's in that, that same position. So they might be, I could feel in the position. I just want to read that up.
Is the policy one year? What I understand? Yeah. I thought.
Anyway. Got that. Well, yes, I, I recognize this concern. Um, discussion items, legislative advocacy date? I don't believe so, I don't believe there's anything at this time. Um, season twelve update?
Not a meeting till August. There isn't a meeting till August.
No. That's a good, yes. Uh, long range planning.
Yeah, I think we will have a presentation and.
Sure, um, was, uh, was school perceptions going to be here, are they here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, so I think they're going to do the presentation first and then, uh, then Steph and I are going to summarize the conversation from the long-range planning committee. Because they do have recommendation on, uh, how to proceed and move forward based on the school perceptions data that's in the folder. So we can take it away.
All right, good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, perfect, I will share my screen, thank you for the introduction. All right, can everyone see?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, good evening again, um, as Tina mentioned, this is the presentation to encompass the project that's been happening for the last year and a half. So it's really started back in twenty twenty-three to get to today. On Monday night, the Myron, ISG and Baird team were at the long-range planning committee and we went through survey results. Possible referendum solutions and then facilitated discussion in which the long-range planning committee could create a recommendation that you'll hear later, so. Well, a couple pieces of housekeeping prior to that, again, this process started, like I said, in January of twenty twenty-three. We are at the end of the decision-making process. And what have we learned? This is, this is, uh, recapping the school perceptions survey results that were presented on June thirteenth. And I'm sharing three slides with you because these slides were really impactful for the committee to make their recommendation. Number one, sixty percent of the respondents indicated they would support that thirteen point nine million. Again, that's the weighted average, seventy-five percent non-parents, non-staff, twenty-five percent parents. As school perceptions explain that that is indicative of your breakdown in your community based on the census. When asked if the community would support eighteen million dollars, not quite, you're at forty-three and a half percent of that same weighted average. The survey outlined a base plan and additional priorities. Within each priority, respondents were able to, um, provide feedback on their priorities within each priority. So they were able to rank each item within the priority, um, number, and here is the, the first priority that was asked after the base plan. In those items, the high school main entrance had a likelihood of support of two point one-two and the middle school, high school restrooms, locker room had a likely score of support for two point zero seven. So asked to gauge one to three, um, these were the two highest throughout the, the additional considerations that were asked. Lastly, residents and respondents were able to provide feedback on if the projects were acceptable, how much they would be willing to spend, a dollar amount that was connected to a tax impact. And broken into the three categories, non-parents, non-staff, parents and staff, you'll see where the median fell. So at thirteen point nine, the non-parents, non-staff had a little bit more green space, I mean, you could go maybe perhaps a little higher than thirteen point nine and the parents were actually supporting at the eighteen million dollar threshold. So that is what led us really into the option solution. So what we did as a team was analyze the feedback and provide different options to the long-range planning committee to consider. So Kevin Mullen will explain the solutions that were explored. I'm sorry, Kevin Bills, too many Kevin's.
Yes, no problem, thanks, thanks Megan, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Kevin Bills with ISG Architects and Engineers, so, uh, like Megan talked about, we took that information and just said, you know, there, like Megan talked about. Um, great support at that, uh, base plan at thirteen point nine, uh, but, but really not crossing that fifty percent threshold at the eighteen million. And so we want to, um, just provide some options, some ideas for the long-range planning, uh, group to consider on Monday night. So what we did, what you see here is, is option one would be just continue with the base plan as surveyed for thirteen point nine million dollars total project cost. The alternative, we said, we recognize there's some important pieces in the, in those other projects that were considered, uh, the priority two, such as the accessibility improvements in the secure entrance. And so what we did is we put together an alternative that is slightly higher at fourteen point four three million dollars. And so we'll walk through what that alternative option, that option two looks like next. Uh, sorry, so option one, like you talked about, uh, that's exactly as surveyed, uh, we could just continue down that path of the thirteen point nine million dollars. But that's really going to be primarily that capital maintenance work. This alternative that we talked about, option two, what, I'll draw your attention to the right-hand side first. So this incorporates two things into, uh, the fourteen point four million dollars. One is the far right, you see the renovating the restrooms on the second floor next to the gymnasium. So those would now be renovated and fully ADA compliant. And this also looks at doing a, a addition to the front of the building, uh, for an accessible ramp down to the lowest level to the office level. Now, one thing that came up in the long-range planning meeting Monday night was their suggestion was, we think that makes more sense for the middle and high school office to now be located there because they get the majority of the visitors. Um, because we recognize in this concept, because it is scaled back compared to the concept we looked at, at the survey timeframe, that we wouldn't be able to fit district office and the middle and high school staff all in that area. The thought is that make most sense that the middle and high school staff here, uh, office staff here, it's a fully accessible, it's an enclosed, uh, ramp, so that would be a building addition that you see there on the bottom. And a, um, a proper flowing, secure entrance to that lowest level. And like I said before, then the district office would either, uh, would, would likely move to the existing middle and high school space, so they would basically just flip-flop locations. So if that were the case, uh, we also want, we want to be considerate of the cost. And so we said, let's look back at that capital maintenance list and we know that these are all priorities, but there's some things within here still that as a district would be easier to do. Um, as one-off projects, part of the ten-year capital maintenance plan. So we, but these two projects we just talked about, the restroom renovation and the secure, the accessible entrance, those are really hard for a district to do as a summer project. Number one, you have multiple prod, multiple contractors involved, um, to, to coordinate these as a challenge on your own as a district. And two, probably the bigger one is they're very costly, um, this would probably more than eat up at one summer's entire capital maintenance budget, either one of those projects. So our thought was, we, there's a few items in that capital maintenance list on the left that we could pull off there, move into the capital maintenance. Um, otherwise, if we don't do that, that total prod, that total cost is really going to be pushing up in over fifteen million dollars. So there's a concern that we're getting too close to, um, you know, we knew at that eighteen million dollars, we're, uh, at around forty-five percent support. And so the concern was that, you know, you could be risking your support by not making some adjustments there. So I'll pause there, um, and I believe Kevin Mullen is going to go over the finance portion of what the cost difference, uh, would mean to you.
Good evening, everyone, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, um, my name's Kevin Mullen, I work with Baird and I've been working with, uh, the team in the district, um, in the background to provide tax impact, uh, analysis for you. And the purpose of the, uh, tax impact analysis at this point, obviously, is, um, has been to, uh, take those project costs and put them into some sort of, you know, impact that, uh, your constituency can use to value those projects. And so we use some assumptions to come up with those tax impacts and the purpose of that is to, you know, um, compare those costs amongst a myriad of projects. And the reason that I go, kind of go into the background of that is that, um, initially, when these projections are put together, they're intentionally meant to be conservative because they have to have a fair amount of shelf life because you're talking about them now. And they're including things that are going to change over time, including interest rates as you get closer to potentially borrowing the money, as well as things like the equalized value of the district and how aid is paid to the district. And so, you know, we try to be sensitive to that, but also conservative and it, it'll make more sense as to why I get into that, uh, moment. Um, but for, uh, purposes of the survey, um, we put together a plan of finance that had a few assumptions, we assumed that the borrowing would be done over two calendar years and that we would be able to borrow for the full maximum term, uh, allowed by state statute or twenty years. Uh, so we would be essentially borrowing at one time, uh, for twenty years in two thousand twenty-five and then again for twenty years in two thousand twenty-six, a portion of the borrowing, um, in each of those calendar years. And then giving us a, uh, twenty-one years of repayment as a way to keep that, uh, overall cost down. We assumed state aid and presently, under the current aid formula, you get seven cents back for every dollar you spend. Um, that likely will be changing heading into, um, the fall, uh, because you have a TIF district that's coming off and it probably, uh, will have, it will add value to the, uh, community, but will also have probably a slight, uh, an impact of slightly decreasing aid. Uh, so that's one of the estimates that we used and then we assumed that the value of the school district, the tax base would grow at one percent a year. Um, as you know, your recent history has been growth in value of much more than one percent of year, uh, per year, but what most of that growth reflects is inflationary growth. Your homes are worth more this year than they were last year because market values have pushed them up as opposed to new things being constructed in, uh, the community. We're assuming that the growth moving forward would be new things occurring at roughly a percent a year, so, you know, conservative relative to what's happened, uh, thus far. So when you bake all of that into the cake and assume a borrowing rate of five and a quarter percent on the first borrowing and five and a half percent on the second borrowing, which are also conservative, we get to a tax impact on the thirteen point nine million of a dollar ninety-nine per thousand. Uh, meaning that the owner of a hundred thousand dollar home would expect an impact of a hundred and ninety-nine dollars a year for that project. Uh, the owner of a two hundred thousand dollar home similarly would expect a three hundred and ninety-eight dollar increase on their home. And then we've broken that down in terms of monthly cost. We used all those same assumptions and built the same type of analysis for that fourteen point four million dollar, uh, solution that Kevin Bills talked about previously. And that tax impact using those assumptions and structured, structured the same way, came in at an impact of two dollars and six cents, or roughly seven cents higher than the dollar ninety-nine. Um, annually, again, on a hundred thousand dollar home, that would be a two hundred and six dollar increase to a taxpayer with a, a one hundred thousand dollar property. Um, and if a homeowner had a property that was worth two hundred thousand dollars, it would be four hundred and twelve dollars annually. One question that came up in the, uh, facilities planning, uh, session was, well, you know, if we went with question two, um, you know. you know, we would like to not break the threshold of a dollar ninety nine. Is there, you know, any way that, you know, we could finance that for a dollar ninety nine, for example? And so I wanted to talk and just ask for your patience in more detail about the financing. And so I put together what our spreadsheet looks like to get to that original two dollar and six cent impact. Just to show you what would move if we were to go from two oh six to a dollar ninety nine. And I put a box around the two oh six in the right hand corner of the schedule. So what we did is we scheduled out an estimate of what ten million dollars looks like borrowed in two thousand twenty five at five and a quarter percent. And then an estimate of what five and a half percent, an interest rate of five and a half percent would look like financing the balance of that borrowing in two thousand twenty six. And you can see those principal and interest payments to get a combined referendum debt service amount in the middle of the page. And it's highlighted in blue. So we go from nine eighty six up to about a million seventy four in total debt service, and then it flattens out. We also then factor in the impact of state aid and net that out. And you'll see as your tax that value grows, we start with basically two dollars and five cents for the first three years. And then your tax rate as your value grows at one percent a year starts to go down. And that's intentional because we wanted to give you a little bit of flexibility in the future to potentially address needs as they may arise, or to give you the ability to, you know, manage other costs in your budget. So, you know, that's kind of the baseline that we used. If we were to take those same assumptions and try to, you know, take that million, ten, or sorry, fourteen million, three, forty, and combine that into a tax impact at a dollar ninety nine. Essentially, what we do is we push principal out a little bit, and you'll see that those payments stay at a dollar ninety nine for a little bit longer. Pushes it out probably about three and a half to four years in terms of where that decrease occurs. So I wanted to give you a sense that, yes, it's possible to, you know, put together a plan of finance that would show that second option also at a dollar ninety nine, but we would be giving up a little bit of flexibility. In my opinion, not a lot of flexibility. So I know that was something that the long range planning committee wanted to explore and at least present that to you in terms of feedback. A lot of information, any questions regarding that?
Yeah, just one more question about like pushing that principal out. You would ultimately then be paying more interest.
Correct. And so here, using those two comparisons, that additional interest cost, I figured that out. It was here amounted to, you know, around a hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking total interest, principal and interest of twenty three million, six thirty four compared to twenty three million, five thirty seven, because we're really not pushing a lot of principal out in order to do that.
But it would cost about a hundred thousand dollars to do so.
About a hundred thousand dollars more over the life of the borrowing, correct? Slightly less, but yeah, conservatively speaking, yes.
And that's considering the assumptions that you have built in. There could be a lower interest rate. You could finance in the future.
Yeah, there's, thanks, Megan. I think the point here is is that these are conservative numbers and a lot is going to change, especially as we head into October. And well, into August, really, when the state starts to release information for next year, new values, new aid, things of that nature. And just again, for some additional perspective, borrowings right now in the current market for issuances similar to this would be in the mid four percent range compared to the mid five percent range that we're projecting. So, you know, as we get closer to the actual referendum, we, you know, would likely be more comfortable dialing in that interest rate a little bit more. So the next slide, I think that this is a very useful slide for comparative purposes. So this slide shows some of the peer districts around the school district of Washburn and what their total tax rates were for debt service and operations, their total tax rate for their whole operational levy last year. And you can see the Washburn is kind of on the, you know, in the middle of that grouping of communities. I'll point out that Drummond on the very right hand side at two dollars and twenty one cents, they were the lowest tax rate for K twelve district in the state of Wisconsin last year. And they obviously, as you know, had passed a building and an operational referendum that will increase that tax rate as others have as well. But I think what's important here is the five dollars and eighty one cents that represented your tax rate last year. Obviously, compared, I think, favorably with your peers. But when you look at the state average, the state average for a K twelve district in Wisconsin was seven dollars and twenty two cents. And so last year, you were roughly a dollar forty below that state average for tax rate. And I, I think that that just adds good perspective to your conversation as you're looking at what, you know, your needs are and how you compare to how other school districts are funding their needs.
All right, throwing it back to Tina then.
Well, first, I'm just gonna ask for any like initial thoughts or questions while these guys are like right on the on the horn here. If you have any other questions about that presentation or or thoughts. Okay, so I, well, I'll go through and then Steph, you can let me know because sometimes, you know, you tell a story and it's not always the same story that even though they're all in the room. So it's nice that the both of us were here to, and we have like other fact checkers, I suppose. First, I just wanted to point out the obvious, which when we're having conversations about like option one or option two, or is a kiln essential? Or like, can we put off putting in a new freezer? Like, we're having all these like really difficult and hard conversations about like providing great education for our students. Even though it's obvious, it doesn't seem obvious in those moments. So I'm just going to point out the obvious that we have like more than sixty percent of our community supporting the improvement, accessibility, safety of our school and our students. So so I just wanted to point that out before this conversation. And I also am going to start out with like the disappointments. Because there's always like, like a feeling of like, ah, like what else can we do? Isn't there something else? Like, why is it happening this way? Why are we back in this position again? We've heard from other community members at these, at these meetings and conversations. And I just wanted to summarize like just two of the like, kind of poignant disappointments at this particular meeting, which is like how far our dollars go and how little it seems to get us. And that was kind of like just a resonating theme, I think, when we're talking about like, what is the next step and what are we going to do? Also that we really want to support security. And it's really hard to say, we're supporting security. We're going to improve the security of our building when we know that there's so much more to do. And again, our dollars just don't go as deep as we want them to. And and so the proposals brought forward may not be as, I guess, as comprehensive as we really need as a district. So then that just brings in like the next conversation, which is, hey, this is the long range planning committee. Like, what else do we do? But long range plan? We've got a great like tenure plan that's been in our kind of culture as a district the last ten years. Why not come up with like a twenty year vision? Why not come up with a thirty year vision that can help our like children, children's children in the future so that our future administrators are just not stuck and our future school board members are just not faced with the same conversation and the same disappointments. I think that we can, I think that we can continue to to look forward in the future. So the general consensus was that in addition to the big projects like the HVAC and the windows and the tech point, we really do want to focus on security and accessibility. If there's anything that we can do in that realm, we're going to want to do that. That was supported by the survey and mostly supported, you know, by that like thirteen million dollar price tag. By adding in the security and the accessibility, we're going to bump that like thirteen dollar price tag, which is specifically on the survey, which we got sixty percent support for. We're going to bump it to fourteen point three. Yeah. So, so that's a little bit more like, is that a little more gray? Like, do we know if we have sixty percent like community support for a project like that? What do we do if it fails? And so we had some like speculation about like that kind of conversation as well. The general consensus, oh, as I already talked about that, like, we just don't necessarily want to put our board in that position again in another like ten to fifteen years. So we really want to make sure that like the work that is done is done well. And that's needed. And then we had that conversation about like, well, what is needed and what is not? And we gave a presentation or we gave some data to our community saying, these are essential projects. Like, these are, these are all very essential projects that we need to get done. And that's at a cost of like thirteen million. In order to achieve the accessibility and the security that we want, some of those essential projects are not going to be included in like the final presentation or the final bid or whatever it is that we use moving forward. So how can you say it is essential? And now you're saying, oh, you can just put it in a tenure plan, you know? But we, we noted and had this conversation that like, you know what? There are things that are not appropriate for a tenure plan. The HVAC is not appropriate for a tenure plan, but like maybe that maybe that stage lighting and a fire rated kiln enclosure is. Like, that is something that you can easily incorporate into a tenure plan and build out and potentially even get additional funding for, you know? That's like outside of the taxpayer one realm. But they are essential for our kids' learning and they're essential for the school experience. So
They are also projects that you can do, like it's a, it's a simpler project.
Right.
You don't have to have like the water guy.
Yeah. So that's how we kind of said, hey, you know what? We said these are essential and they are. We still plan on addressing them. Let's do it in like a little bit more of a segmented way and get all of the big things that need subcontractors and planning and potentially architects and everything else kind of get that work done with this referendum. And I'll just end by saying like long range planning is committed to just that, the long range planning. And with that, we kind of, we had pretty, pretty solid consensus, a thumbs up from everybody for option two, which was the fourteen point three million dollar, including the accessibility into the high school. My personal thought after hearing, you know, that like, okay, well, that two dollar, so this is not the summary of the conversation. So I guess I'll just pause on my own personal thought. So you can go ahead and I give your, you did a great job.
The only thing I would add is that we all had that moment of like, okay, we started out with wanting a whole new school and got crushed and now we're ending up, we were worried, we're in a, we're in a place where we're asking the community to put out so much money, right? And then they're going to end up with a school that is basically set from the, you know, from the outside, they're going to look at it, be like, well, I mean, we all know that there was good work done on the inside, longevity for the building, yada, yada, yada. But you know, we're going to have people who are like, well, I wanted a pretty new building. So that's one of the things that we, aside from just a basic necessity for that accessibility and improved security reasonably build out, you know, do that entryway project. So these people, I mean, there'd be something visual. It's hard to see HVAC. You can't see HVAC, you know?
We're a pretty practical community. We kind of understand that like this building is so essential to Washburn's identity and to us functioning and like thriving as a community. But we don't want to take that for granted. And we want to be able to like give the taxpayers like things that they can be proud of also. And so like when tech point happens, you can't really see that it actually happened. But it costs millions of dollars to do, you know, like, like, how do you justify that? And, and so I think that we know that these guys have been very supportive on the way. We've got some great support and some great communications plans coming. I think that was, that was described very well at these meetings as well. So, so we're, we're feeling, feeling great with that recommendation. What else? Other questions, like what are some thoughts or perceptions or?
It just seems to me that when you're talking in that type of, kind of money, when you're talking thirteen million, thirteen point nine, and then you go to fourteen point it's not a big difference. You know, I mean, it's a, it's a lot of money. But we're not not a lot of pretty stuff. Some of that pretty stuff could be in the tenure plan, you know? Stage lighting that we want, maybe not through the auditorium, but So at this point in time, we have to make that decision as the board of which way we're going.
Um, I don't, I don't believe we do, but what do you, what do you guys think? I think we have the, the absolute deadline to come up with like phrasing for a referendum is Yeah, go ahead.
The deadline for the board to adopt a resolution to go to referendum is August twenty seventh. So you still have time. What I would recommend the district do is start working with legal counsel to draft resolution language. Meaning that the words that the voters will vote on at the polls, start drafting that and then bring that forward to the board for the board to see. And maybe make any tweaks that are necessary and then vote on the resolution to go to referendum.
But do we need to make a decision from the board as to whether we're going with option one or option two? I mean, don't you need that for the language?
So, so I guess what I would interpret that as a support member is that we can say, let's draft the language using option two. And it's just a draft. And so if we, if new information comes up to us or if somebody has concerns or if something happens and we're like, nope, you know what? We need to go with option one. We still have time, even between our next board meeting and the deadline, to draft a resolution. And I would assume that we would like, it'd be a little bit of a scramble to like get us together on a Zoom call or a, or an email vote or something. But we still have time to move forward with changing the resolution. So, so that's, I guess, what we
Yeah, well, I guess I'd like to hear from, from the board then, you know, what the recommendation is from the long range planning.
Agreeing with what Tina and Stephanie presented before. Yeah, I think most people appreciate.
We of course do have, I mean, there's always the concern going for that increase. We got, we have so, we have great support, which is reassuring. But no matter what, there's a gamble, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, there is, there is, the going that increased to now. Oh my God, what do you do if we don't pass it because we ended up asking for too much? Okay, so fair point, fair point. Yeah.
I can share a little bit about the timeline if you're kind of curious. Megan had summarized that for us in an email. Would that be helpful? So we're meeting this evening to present the recommendation. And then the core team, which would be those that are on the Zoom tonight, as well as some administrative members would need to review the final plan, draft the resolution language, and then review a communications plan that we would use moving forward. The long range planning committee will meet Monday, August fifth. We would review the final plan, draft the, at the actual language, and then again, review the communication plan there. Kind of another set of eyes and ears and voice. And then during the Thursday, August eighth board meeting, we would, you would all review that plan and draft the language there as well. So a continued process. And then we'd have to have a special board meeting. It was kind of noted possibly by August twenty second to actually adapt the language and review the plan. And I think Megan said we could do that all during the board meeting. Right, Megan? We could review and adapt the language during the August eighth board meeting if we were ready.
If the board felt ready, yes.
Yes. If the board was ready to do so, we could. But otherwise, we could have a special meeting to do so.
Correct.
So I hope that helps a little bit with kind of those that would be involved in the discussion and the creation and moving forward.
So district boards have handled it one of two ways. She, um, number one is showing or sharing the draft resolution language at a board meeting. And then making any tweaks necessary, planning a, an additional or special board meeting to adopt the resolution language. Option two is the information is shared via email. And feedback is gathered, so when it's on the next agenda, the board is ready to vote. Again, you have two, a month and a half, so there's a comfortable timeline there, whichever way you choose to go.
Well, personally, I would do number two. And I can see where the community is gonna say why. But if you, if you see what's added to it, can the, the costs in your taxes, is this like you know, ten dollars to twelve dollars difference?
Yeah.
For what you, what you're gonna get and what it would cost later to do it, or, you know?
Yeah.
It, it makes sense.
Yeah, we, we thought like, well, um, like statewide, there's some statistics that say, oh, if it's over that two dollar mark, it's really hard to pass. And this is like literally like cents over the two dollar mark, you know? And so, um, so when you think about, again, our community and, and what we collectively generally agree on. Um, I think that, yes, we're disappointed that our money doesn't go as far as it used to. But a hundred thousand dollars can go a long way. It doesn't make sense to spend a hundred thousand dollars just to get a price tag down because it looks nice, you know, or that's more palatable. Um, I think our community would see right through that and they'd be like, let's use a hundred thousand dollars to do something else. That seems ridiculous. So um, so I guess that's kind of like, that was my own personal two cents that I wanted to add into it. And so I think that like if we go through with that resolution, I think we just go with the um, that like kind of first presentation of the financing and not necessarily um pushing the principal out to make that, that lower monthly payment.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense if you are looking for money for other things. You know, you're gonna wanna have that flexibility. I think it's gonna be really important, yeah, which
And that should be part of the communication.
Absolutely.
Well, and one comment I would like to make with regard to that, as I mentioned earlier, there are a lot of things that are going to change in the assumptions as we get closer uh to September. And so this plan of finance was really, you know, meant for informing the public during the survey process. We're going to really dial that in once we know more in September. So, you know, I wouldn't necessarily predicate any decision on, you know, the difference in seven cents at this point. I think the reason for showing that was just to show it's still possible to, to, to reduce that impact um and still meet all of your needs um in terms of planning for it.
Yeah.
And we had talked through this on Monday night, but the question itself that the voters will have on the ballot does not include tax impact. It only includes the bond amount. So if you go with the fourteen point three, the question will state fourteen point four three. Then the communication that goes out adjacent to the referendum question to support information sharing, that's where we put the tax impact. So the board has a little time to decide, waiting for September numbers to come in.
It's a good idea. Or a good point, yes.
And I, and I do like the idea of looking at a twenty, thirty year plan in the sense that, you know, I was here the last time we did the referendum. And, and it feels like we're still in the same place. You know, I think we've done, they can fix it, but it's not like it's can't fix a one hundred year old building.
Right, but I think that we, but I think there are so many opportunities to give our, like, students and our community the best learning environment possible and like a great community, like center through public education. I just, there's so many opportunities and without thinking in that kind of big, long term, um, we're, we're not gonna be able to achieve those goals.
And, and maybe we, instead of thinking that someday, you know, have this pie in the sky, someday we're gonna have a building.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to just figure out what we can do or make that way instead of
Yeah.
There's other options.
And it's not as if our world isn't changing right now. It's not as if education is not changing right now. Like, all of these things are changing very rapidly and it behooves us to not consider that.
Any other questions, discussion? So we don't need any, any, any
Well, just that recommendation to move forward that resolution draft. Okay, great.
All right. Thank you for all of your hard work, putting in hours and hours on this. Yeah, that, I mean, that's good to do a, a nod or a acknowledgement. But I mean, the subcommittee and the every Friday meetings are going on forever. I mean, there's just, there's been so much.
Our long range planning meetings were going late and the, and the committee um happened more like here. It's really just great to have their support and their input on a regular basis and we just really appreciate them.
Individual action items, if you wanna start going through, if there's any questions that we want to, but between those motions to I would move to approve or annual adoption of academic standard pursuant to state one eighteen point thirty twenty A. Any discussion? I move to approve my bids for the twenty twenty four, twenty five school year.
Have we always used like both? Because there's that one machine that needs to have, like the testers can't support because it's like a bulk milk machine or something, like we've always had the two, right?
For a lot of years.
Yeah. Right. Um, I move to approve the bread bits uh for the twenty twenty four, twenty five school year.
One second. I move to approve W I A A twenty twenty four, twenty five membership renewal. I move to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty five elementary school student handbook.
I'll second.
I move to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five middle school, high school student.
I'll move to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five coach killer.
I move to approve twenty twenty four, twenty five coaches handbook. I move to approve twenty twenty four, twenty five middle school, high school, last other candidate. Question, any questions? I'll favor. Move to approve the first reading policy twenty two sixty four and twenty two sixty. Those were the headline changes in that. And have a very law policy made go through. Any questions or discussion on that? All right. Thank you, everybody. Be going into full session here. So I will need a motion to go into
I move to go into close session uh pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes nineteen point eight five one C for consideration of employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of select school district.
Thank you, everybody.